Thank you. Okay, good evening everybody. I'll open the council meeting on December. Just remind the councillors that we're live, so you need to use your microphones when speaking. And we have councillor Ford on Zoom. Taku, can I hand over for you to open?
Atena tatau te farae tū nei meki ahi tiaki haimeinaiki mai ki a tatau kataia ki rōtou iākuia. Kataia te ahi ahi nei iru ngatara o karama meki a hui atau. Hui hiamai tō kahakairangi a tatau a kaitia tūua. Rātou ki a rātou e moimai, tatau ki a tatau e nohotahi ai te nākotou haramai, te nākotou haramai te nākotou. Te nākotou ki okotou nei manu hiri tuārangi, arāka tāiai iru ngatara o karama, no mai haramai fakatau mai ra. No re re e pa e fa pe petaua mai tāu ki akuia, motene rātāhua kaipuraitou ki tōn mātou ariki. Amin. Kia ora.
Kia ora.
Thank you. I have an apology from councillor Saoli and I have no requests for leave of absence, so I'll move that. Do I have a second to please? Thank you councillor Trillin. All those in favour? All those against? Carried. So I welcome our public here today. Welcome to you all. We've got our first speaker is Annette Thompson. Would you like to come up, Annette? You just put the speaker on. Oh, Ewan's done it for you?
Good evening. My name's Annette Thompson. I live on Monk Evan Avenue, next to the vacant plunket rooms. And I come here today with my concerns regarding the big gum trees that are in line with the fence of my property and one directly behind which fell on the 3rd of December and damaged a power pole, which brought down some lines. They had to replace some lines. And I'm concerned and have been for a number of years about those trees falling and was warned about the one that fell, that it was going to fall. And arborists kept telling me, "No, no, it hasn't fallen yet", you know, "It's not gonna fall" and it did. Luckily, it didn't fall onto my property, fell onto your reserve. But the trees that are concerning me the most and worrying me to the point where I'm nervous to go out in my backyard now and enjoy my yard are the big gums that are about 80 foot high roughly. And they do, they are shallow rooted. There is a waterway next to them and my concern is they're gonna fall over and either land on my house, which belongs to Kainga Orda, or fall directly onto the shed or on somebody out in the backyard at the time. And I've had a report from Wellington Electricity, which they sent through, which I can leave here with you, and also one from Treescape, who come out and had a look at the trees as well. And, sorry, I'm not used to public speaking, so bit nervous. Basically, I'm worried for my health and safety, living in that property with those trees being so high and... They are dangerous. A limb fell down back in 2014 overnight and like a dart went straight through the windscreen of my car at the time. So I woke up the next morning and found my windscreen shattered with a small branch. So it wasn't a big limb poking out of the broken window screen. And yeah, I'm just concerned they're getting older and the longer they're there, the taller they're growing and the more danger they pose to the power lines running through them as well as myself and my property. And not to mention people walking along the walkway. Children go to school through there, people walk through there. You don't know when they're gonna fall. If they fall, not if, when they fall. They're gonna do some nasty serious damage or kill somebody. And the other concern is all the rubbish that has been dumped in the waterways, computer screens, all sorts of rubbish. The arborists dumping their trees in there when they've cut limbs down poses a fire risk once it dries out in the weather. It takes someone to be walking along there smoking or somebody being silly and light a fire. A bit of a worry. And then you've got the empty section directly behind my section, which is really badly overgrown, which also poses a health and safety risk with the weather starting to dry out. The grass was up knee-high. There's rubbish dumped in there, old mower bodies and baby buggies and tree debris. And I'm just very concerned and would like to know if you're going to do anything about it.
Okay, I'll open it up to questions for councillors for you. So Ewan?
Thank you. You said you had a report from Treescape. What was the, what did they say in that report?
Well, it's just here. It wasn't a huge report. The guy came out yesterday. It was actually sent through to Graham Clark from Wellington Electricity. And he has written, "Hi Graham, after a visual inspection of the gum trees on the Porro City Council Reserve behind Monk Evan Ave Ranui, the large gum trees are outside the notice zone to the 400 volt lines that run through there. So we are unable to issue a cut and trim notice to the council. However, as there is a lot of overhang and the trees are within full distance to the lines, the gum trees are a risk to the network lines."
You got a follow-up question?
Yes, I would like to ask the officers, what's the life of a gum tree and the height of the gum tree? And I guess I'm being a little bit biased here because I had the same situation at the rear of my property, a number of 80-foot gum trees. So I'm very conscious of the concerns of my neighbours as well. So what I'm trying to establish is what is the life of these trees and when are they deemed to be, deemed to be dangerous?
Councillor, there's nobody in the room who can answer that particular question, but we're happy to get that response to you.
Councillor, are we happy?
Sorry, Annette. Hi. Just a question, when you were talking about the rubbish that was dumped and the green waste that was dumped, does that get reported very often?
I don't know if anyone else reports it, but I have rung it a number of times and reported, yeah.
Any other question? Councillor Duncan, followed by councillor Hayward.
Yes, Annette, you mentioned the section behind you being overgrown. Do you know who owns that section?
Porro City Council.
It's a city council section.
Reserve.
Thanks.
Councillor Hayward.
Okay, Annette, two part I. I just wanna double check the trees, the gum trees that are affected. Like you councillor Morell, I'm a former gum tree owner as well, so I understand some, some risk. The trees themselves, are they on council property or are they on the plunket property?
The plunket own the building and my understanding is that you guys, the Porro City Council owns the land.
Okay. My second part I is about the green waste that's going in there. Do you know who are the individual arborists who are putting those items in, in that space, who are dumping those items?
Yes, my understanding is it's Wellington City Council that contracts to Porro City Council, their arborists. And they were the ones, I'd spoke to them back in October and they were cutting down little branches off trees close to power lines on the other side of the walkway. And they dumped off big logs and they were just leaving them where they cut them and throwing them in where the waterway is in between the trees. And when I questioned him about it, he just said, "Oh, they'll rot away."
Any other questions for Annette? Okay, thank you, Annette. Thank you very much. We'll come back to you.
Bye.
We can get it back to you, the photo book, after. Okay, thank you, Annette. Okay, next up we have Ian McKeown.
I'm ready now. Right, your worship. First off, congratulations. My name's Ian McKeown. I am here to talk about flooding. Akron Road in Mana. Firstly, I wish to, oh, sorry, before I carry on, I've got some photos and that to share table. That's the copy which you asked for. That's a copy for the council. And I've also got other ones which can be passed around to the other councillors to share. That's for the council. No, no, there's two main sets and the other one is flooding from last December. Right, firstly, I wish to sincerely thank you and Morell for his time. Sorry. Especially coming to see me in person Monday evening, that the friggin flood again. My son returned from Europe about four years ago and his parents helped him purchase a place in September 2009. In November, he installed two heat pumps, 5,400. Unexpectedly, in December, after heavy rain and a king tide, the section was flooded. That's the main photo that's gone round and it's of both sides, I've shown both sides of the house. Fortunately, the water didn't enter the house because of the lay of the land. However, I was wading through the water above my knees. So I'm not talking about a drop of water. I went down to Miata 10, purchased the biggest pump that they had, that cost over $650 and started pumping. The fire brigade arrived and they started pumping and then they set up a manual hydrant down the road, which was left going for most of the day to pump the water from the section back to the Porro City drain where it's meant to go in the first place. I spoke to neighbours and found the area has flooded in the past caused by leaves, twigs and branches from the adjacent park. Beautiful park, lovely Trillin's playground and the line of trees on the far side. All the debris blocks the drain, the water rises, the street drain can't cope, the water crosses the road, finds the lowest point and starts flooding 16, 14 and 18. The outside heat pumps units were extensively damaged, had to be replaced. This time, I got the firm to mount them higher on brackets. I contacted the former owner, former Porro City councillor, Dale Williams. He advised, yep, back in 2016, the flooding was extraordinary, ranged, deluged down, coincided with the king tide, there were many slips and stuff around. However, the drain in the grate in Akron Park regularly gets covered with grass clippings from the mowers, branches from the bush and bark from the playground. I and other neighbours would often clear it, especially before heavy rains, but from memory, I don't think the grate was blocked or anything then. He says he wonders, given the size of the catchment in the park and mortar, okay runoff, maybe the underground stormwater pipes were not, okay, big enough. In 2016, it took three days for the water to drain from the section and it's sandy soil. It should just drain like that. On that day last year, I called the Porro City Council, two calls to your call centre. I was advised somebody would contact me, bumped a few days later, bumped into Ashley Gore out in the car park, spoke to him, because I know him from Hampton Hill School. He says, "Yep, somebody will get back to you. Ashley, I'm still waiting." I came down here personally to see the public counter. I was told at the public counter, "It's not the council's problem, go and see Wellington Water." So I went up to speak to Steve Watt, the manager at Wellington Water. He advised it was a 50-year flood. I corrected him and advised at that stage, to my knowledge, it had flooded three times in 20 years. He explained that they don't get enough funding from the council, that's where the problem lies. He arranged for an engineer to meet me at site. I met AJ, one of his engineers. He advised that the pipes were laid in 1950 and include the Walker Avenue area. The issue was the plant, the debris and he believed a leaf catcher type drain would cover the drain and that what was required. I also met a team leader from your Parks and Reserves. He advised that the Porro's council were not aware of the problem and he would add this particular drain in the park to your list to check before heavy rains. November 2020, twice, it's flooded. Again, the section flooded. The culprit is leaves, twigs, branches blocking the drain and the water ponding in the park, it overflows. Contacted Wellington Water, Steve Watts. "Oh, I thought it was sorted. They don't have a risk management, they don't prioritise, they don't have any functionality to ensure jobs are completed and sorted." Have spoken to Paul Davidson from Wellington Water, an engineer. He's visited the site. Yes, he confirms it needs a leaf catcher type drain and a second drain further up in the park over a wee walkway that's got a drain pipe to block that, to catch the first amount of leaves and branches and twigs. Then the main catcher over the other one at the base of the park. However, I find out Wellington Water are in charge of drains on the roads. This drain is in a Porro City Council park. This drain in the park flows into the Porro City, into the road drain. And he says, "Porro City Council's responsible for it. I will go and talk to Parks and Reserves and Wellington Water's only responsible for the road drain." I said, "I couldn't care who's responsible, I just want it fixed." You know, sort out the issue. I understand that Plymouthon, you had 30 trucks clearing out stuff? Now that's reactive maintenance. I'm after preventative maintenance. My car goes to Miata 76 months for a service, so I'm not gonna break down on the road. It's, I've been a rate payer for nearly 40 years and sorry, this, it's just, oh, shut up.
That's okay. Thank you, Ewan. Anyone got any questions for Ian? Kylie?
Hi Ian.
Hi.
Just a question, when you purchased the property, were there any disclosures in writing about any past or potential flooding to the property?
I thought I recognised you. Yes, well, yes and no. It was a very generalistic, one-sentence fluffy wording that I've gone back to the real estate agent to inquire about it. But then contacting Dale Williams, I actually found out what happened. But no, it wasn't disclosed. It was a fluffy speak, not meat, potatoes, pies and veggies.
Okay, thank you, Ian. Question for staff, Wendy. Will we get a leaf grate there or will the Parks team actually look at this rather than Wellington Water? Because it sounds like it's going in circles, which is not a good thing to do. So can we have some kind of commitment here to one of the teams looking at it?
Through the mirror, I think what the solution is for the grate that's in question has to be worked out with engineers. I don't think it's over to the Parks people to determine what the best engineering solution is. Over years, things have been tried and what you're telling me is it's jamming up with leaves and wood and everything else.
And grass.
Yeah. So there are, within a, you know, what happened in various places like the park, up high, there was flooding, you know, up the mountain, up the hill, which is unusual and then further down and then right at the bottom. So the whole thing has to be locked out to determine how you can get that water flowing through quicker. But again, there was a king high tide also, so that has to be looked at as well. But certainly one of the things, we'll look at the grate and there's issues there with it being a park and children and health and safety things. So something has to be designed which works.
But those, I also contacted Malcolm Birch last year as well. The council's aware of it?
Okay, so can we just have a point of contact to deal with Ian so that we don't keep going in circles?
The point of contact will be David Down, who's our water manager in council, who has our relationship with Wellington Water. And we have approximately 20 legoomas or letters that are in the system at the moment from a variety of residents, not all from that area, Plymouthon area, but around over the flooding. So we're trying to get back to people as quickly as we can.
So is David Down also responsible for the tip?
Yes.
I've spoken to him, he's aware of it as well?
Yes, I'm familiar with your letter and what I'm saying is we have a large number of letters sitting there and we have had Wellington Water in today to talk about what some of the possible solutions might be in that area, but...
But he was aware of it eight months ago.
Yes, Ian, but unfortunately, we don't just have you flooding. We have a serious number of houses, we will have problems. So we have to work everybody out. I'm not trying to push you off. The staff are aware of it and hopefully we will come back to you in the new year and have another discussion. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ian. Okay, next up we have Alicia Gheer and Grace Wellsby. Just one of you? Okay, so...
I'll stand if it's all right.
Yeah.
Pleasure to have you with me.
That's okay.
Kira koutou ko Grace Wellsby, takoe ngua ko topo Plymouthon aho. My name's Grace Allen. I'm here today as a spokesperson for the Plymouthon Flood Action Group. We're a community group from Plymouthon established in the days following the flood on 29 November. Firstly, I'd like to thank all of you very much for your time and for giving us the opportunity to speak to you. I'd also like to thank the council staff and emergency services who supported our community on 29 November and in the days following. And thank you especially to councillors Morell and Trillin who accepted our invitation to walk through some of the worst affected properties in the day since. We held an emergency community meeting on Friday evening. Based on that, I've got a statement that I'd like to read for you, please. And I also would like to table a list of five action points that we would like you to consider, please. Take one, pass it on, sort of thing. Before I table the actions, I'd like to set the scene of what my community is going through right now. I'd like to echo Ian's comments. It's not a competition. No one wants to win most flooded house, but we've got it pretty bad. On 29 November, flooding affected 65 properties in Plymouthon. 30 homes suffered internal damage from floodwater. 16 homes were left uninhabitable. Emergency services received 24 111 calls and six different fire brigades from across Wellington responded to the disaster. This means dozens of our neighbours are now not only forced to spend Christmas in temporary accommodation but face up to 12 months away from their homes. Those whose homes are only partially destroyed are living amongst a construction zone and they also face a long road back to normality. Yes, what we have lost are just material possessions. It is just stuff. Our insurance companies will rip out our floorboards, they'll retail our bathrooms, they'll refit our kitchens and they'll send us down to Harvey Norman for a new fridge. We've also lost the photo albums on our bookshelves, the wedding dresses in the back of our wardrobes and our child's favourite toy. We've lost things that can't be replaced. But most importantly, we've lost our right to feel safe in our homes. Unfortunately, the flood does not come as a surprise to anyone who lives in Plymouthon. The rainfall on 29 November was major, but it's not a one-off event. The stormwater system in our area cannot cope with any sort of rainfall. This is our reality. Years of underinvestment, poor design and neglect have left many parts of Porirua with a stormwater system that simply isn't up to the job. This has now had a devastating effect on the Plymouthon community. In our area, I'm told the system is overwhelmed by average rain because we have a catchment area of 78 hectares that is expected to drain almost exclusively into a 130-centimetre pipe at Karihana Park that narrows and gets smaller as it makes its way out to sea. Significant improvements are needed to make the stormwater system, to the stormwater system, not only to help us feel safe, but to actually keep us safe. I've spoken to at least 100 residents in the 17 days since the flood, walking up muddy streets with slips and... There's one resounding message that I keep hearing above all else. If the council doesn't take action now, one day someone is going to drown. On the morning of 29 November, many of my neighbours were left standing in waist-deep water. As the system became overwhelmed, the water came down from the hills like a tsunami. I spent the morning of 29 November standing in the Karihana Park culvert. While a neighbour and his two teenage children stood chest-deep inside a fast-running contaminated stormwater drain. They helped, I helped them to desperately clear the debris so water would keep flooding. They ripped out weeds, they ripped out branches, they ripped out the sort of green waste that Annette was talking was being dumped into her waterways. They were shivering and they were covered in mud. Other neighbours arrived to help and we sent them to the Karihana Beach drain, to the Reserve Road culvert, to the roadside drains on Upper Elly, to the St Teresa's church, all of which were flooding. The council was not there. Yes, the rain was extreme and yes, the tide was coming up, but we'd already flooded. The flood does not come as a surprise to anyone from Karihana Bay. For some of my neighbours, this is the third time their property has flooded in the last five years. They flooded in 2016, they flooded in 2019 and now again in 2020. How many times do our homes need to flood? How deep does the water need to get? How many times do residents need to call or email PCC to raise the alarm? At Karihana Park, I have a picture of me standing with the floodline where the water eases off into the top of the park into our homes and it's nipple height on me. How old do you think a child would need to be to be this tall? Four, five? Next time, and unless you do something, there will be a next time. Someone is going to drown. Our community is suffering. Mayor, councillors, we are shaken, we are scared and we need your help. In front of you, you'll find suggestions for five immediate actions that we ask the council undertake immediately. They're exactly, that's exactly your point. We are not experts. We don't know how to fix these problems, but we can tell you that the problem is massive. Firstly, we ask that you identify in action immediate interim measures to protect the area from flooding while those long-lasting solutions can be found. We suggest these could include installing the backup pump to support the failing Karihana Park culvert that you had in the days following the flood. Immediate action to address the failing wire stop check valve at Karihana Beach. It's not something I ever expected to know anything about. Wire stop valve doesn't work. And we suggest an alert system to notify the council and most importantly, residents when culverts are reaching dangerous levels and pose a flood risk. Because right now, we put out the call, we knock on doors at 2:00 in the morning and we climb into those drains. You're asking us to choose between being safe and saving our homes. Secondly, we ask that you produce and publicly release a maintenance plan and calendar to address the issues with the lack of clearing and upkeep of the culverts and the drains. We've repeatedly been told the drains and the culverts have been cleared in the days before and the days since the flood. We disagree. We have photos taken the day before yesterday around Plymouthon and particularly up in James Street where drains are completely overgrown and there's no way that water can be flowing through them. where drains are completely overgrown and there's no way that water can be flowing through them. Please help us and please publicly release a maintenance calendar so we can feel confident that there will be maintenance to support the small system that we do have. Point three, poor maintenance is making the problem worse, but the system itself is not fit for purpose. We desperately need significant work to be done on the stormwater system. We welcome Wendy Walker's announcement that there will be a review of the flooding incident, but we need to go further. We ask that you commit to undertaking a review of the Plymouth and Karihana Bay catchment areas, our stormwater system and our flood risk. We ask that this be completed no later than 30 April 2021. We know that you hold the data, I've got documents of recommendations from Wellington Water that you have chosen not to implement because of cost. We are ready. We ask that you work collaboratively with the Plymouth and Flood Action Group to establish a terms of reference for your working group and your review. We are ready and willing to work with you on this. And we would like you to establish one working group because to echo Ian's comments, we have struggled for years being passed between Poirot City Council, Wellington Water and Greater Wellington Regional Council, with each body telling residents it is someone else's responsibility and we can't help you. Please communicate with us openly, we want to listen, we want to share and we want to see progress. We suggest that one Northern Ward councillor be appointed to chair of the working group and act as our point of contact. We ask that you commit for to immediately supporting affected Plymouth and residents, particularly those who must now undertake building work to flood-proof their homes. You could support us by providing proactive resource consent advice, by waiving consent fees for those who now need to undertake serious building work and to help us move quickly through the consenting process so work can be underway quickly. We also have some really, really distressed residents who, if you could make counselling services available at low or no cost, would be really helpful. There are people in our community that we're really worried about. Please assign us a contact person for resource consent that we can work with on this issue, given the power to waive fees and give them the power to help us make progress quickly. And finally, we request that Poirot City Council take learnings from other councils who have successfully tackled similar issues in the past. We request that the council and the working group mentioned in point three, consider the learnings of the Waikarangai floodplain management plan and identify actions that can be applied to Karihana Bay and Plymouth and. The Greater Wellington Regional Council undertook work that saved 450 homes from a 1 in 100 year flood. Please also pay attention to the house raising programme undertaken by the council as part of this work. A handful of Karihana Bay properties are likely suitable candidates for co-funded houselifting as was undertaken by Greater Wellington Regional Council. The owners of these properties wish to discuss the option with PCC and we request a meeting be held on this matter in January or February 2021. Those are our five actions, we're grateful for your time listening to us and considering this issue. We are a community in crisis and we face a long road ahead while we rebuild. For many homes, rebuilding what they had before is not an option. Homes that are so ravaged by floodwaters face basically no choice but to seriously invest and lift their homes or face a fourth flood in five and six years. How many per year do we need? The reputation of our community has been tarnished and this will affect our property prices and our insurance premiums. Many homeowners face the very real possibility that they will no longer be able to get insurance at all. I'll say it again, we're shaken, we're scared and we don't feel safe in our homes. Kitekaore, hefaka kitenga, kanaro te iwi. Without foresight or vision, the people will be lost. We need your help and if you don't do something, next time, someone could drown.
Thank you, Grace. Before I open up to questions, would you like to comment on this Wendy? On a way forward with the points through the working group? Because one of the councillors is going to probably ask that question.
We have, Grace, we have just had a meeting with Wellington Water to look at a way forward for this community. And we can certainly share that, it's going to form part of a discussion on our long-term plan and with some early action on that. So I don't know that I can go into the detail here, but I'm happy to talk to you, you know, pre-Christmas so that we can.
That would be fantastic, thank you very much.
Okay, anyone got any questions for Grace? No? Okay, thank you, Grace, and thank you everybody for coming in.
No questions.
I think we've, yeah. We have just had our briefing from Wellington Water.
Fantastic, if anyone would like to do a tour, destruction tourism around Plymouth and, we have got quite the site for you inside people's homes. Yeah, you probably can't even guess what some of the rooms used to be. Thank you very much, we really, we want to be positive and we want to move forward with you. We don't want to point fingers and blame what's happened in the past. We want to see progress and we'll do whatever it is that you need.
Grace, we've got one question from Taku.
Have you tied in that one with Marae?
We, there have been some conversations, I personally have not because I'm no longer living in the area because I don't have anywhere to live. But yeah, we recognise particularly in 2016 that they have had flooding issues in the past. They weren't as badly affected this time, but it easily could be them next time. So we would like to connect with all of our neighbours.
They did get two houses done this time as well, so yeah. But we do wish to work with you as your group. So thank you, Grace, and thank you all for coming in. Councillor Trillin?
So I just wanted to quickly say, Grace, I think the reason actually hasn't been questions from around the table is you've done a really good job here at being really specific about what you want. So thank you very much for coming along and thank you very much for being so specific as well because it gives us a lot to think about.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you, thank you all. I'm not sure whether you'll want to stay for the meeting or not, it's up to you guys. It might be a long one, but you're more than welcome or you can just get up and go if you'd like to. It's got your contacts on it?
No, they're just other councillors.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, I have no conflicts of interest, no notifications of extraordinary business. So confirmation of minutes from the 11th of November, I will move that, do I have a second? Thank you, Councillor Leggett, all those in favour? All those against, carried. So I now move to the mayor's report. I've actually done one this time. This year has been an unusual one for us all. It started off with the mayors working together on the regional strategy framework, discussing water reforms and then COVID. So I'd like to thank Wendy Walker and the staff for their work during COVID this year and the way we managed our annual plan and what we did at an emergency management office, obviously, with working with the community, the food parcels, the emotional support, the housing and all the other issues that got thrown at us during COVID. So we're actually quite lucky to be sitting here now and we're very lucky to be having Christmas. We've also consulted on the district plan, rates rebate, the Marines Hall, Plymouth and Farm submissions. We've had those, so we're waiting for a result and tonight we're about to do our long-term plan. So obviously we've had some terrible rain events this year with Plymouth and being the latest suburb to bear the brunt of it. We've had Tetai Bay and the east that have been hit hard. Climate change is a real thing and our infrastructure is at capacity during most rain events these days. So we do have some tough choices to make about our infrastructure spending coming up. We also have a wonderful working relationship with Nadi Tawa and we welcome Helmut Modlik as board of the CEO of Nadi Tawa. We have a good relationship with Kaingora and that seems to be going really well. And we want to thank Taku for all his work and attending all our functions. We seem to call you at any short notice, so we appreciate you, thank you, Taku. We're also working really hard with Barbara Edmonds, our new MP, she came to Parliament with us this week, even if it didn't feel that successful. So we're looking forward to working with her for the next two years. And the councillors and I have attended some big events in the city. So 75 years for the Tetai Bay Fire Brigade, 50 years for the Pauro Brass Band. In the last six weeks, we've attended an awful lot of school prize givings. We've had our free Christmas event for children, which was wonderful. We had our night markets and our last night market is tomorrow night, which is our Pacific one. We had our Benjamin Masaki performance on Friday and we've been lucky enough to secure Benjamin for Waitangi Day. And then last week, the Yas, which is the Nadi Tawa and Partners Poirot Group, have been successful in getting a youth one-stop-shop funding. So we're looking forward to them finding a space and opening next year. But finally, I want to thank the council for being open, honest and working so well as a team. It's a pleasure to sit here and debate and know we can get together for a coffee at the end of each meeting and still be friends. So thank you all for your hard work and Merry Christmas. So that's my report. We will now move to confirmation of minutes from our ordinary, no, we won't, we'll go to report from Taku, sorry. You got anything, Taku? No? Okay, we'll move to committee recommendations, so I'll hand over to Councillor Leggett.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move the recommendations of the Tipuna Koruru meeting of the 19th of November, specifically being hearings and deliberations report for the revenue and financing policy, along with hearing and deliberations report for rates remission and postponement policy. That's for the meeting of the 19th of November. And also move the recommendations of the meeting of Tipuna Koruru of the 10th of December, which relates to deliberations for the proposed changes to the rating policy. Also, climate change strategy, a summary of submissions and adoption of the final strategy. Appointment of an alternative amendment to the Wellington Region Climate Change Working Group, along also with investment and liability management policy. And to top it all off, the 31st of October 2020 Finance Report.
Thank you, I've had that seconded by Councillor Duncan. So all those in favour? All those against, carried. We now move to 11.1 Quarterly Update on Recovery Plan. So I will move that to put it on the table, seconded by Councillor Waddell. Open for discussion. Any? Councillor Duncan?
Yes, thanks. On page 26, under the Financial Stability and Unemployment heading, the last paragraph ends with this has been funded through. What?
We're looking. Oh, okay. Have you found it?
The library is now free and our additional, oh, sorry. And our additional branches will be, will have wifi added to our other branches over the next three months as we purchase equipment and add licences to expand the wifi. And I believe that sentence should say this has been funded through internal reallocations of funding, am I correct? Thank goodness.
Does that make sense to you now, Councillor Duncan? Okay, I've got, Councillor Morrell? Oh, sorry.
Stakeholder feedback. And I was really concerned to read from the iwi-based primary healthcare provider saying, we've set up our own food banks as we found other food banks were making our people jump through too many hoops. Now, I wondered, did we do any investigation of that to see what the hoops were and why they were an actual problem? Because I thought the food banks did an amazing job during that COVID time.
Yeah, come to one of these, just by Josh.
Yeah, so we did a bit of investigation just through our work at the EOC. So we were aware that some people felt like they did have to jump through quite a lot of hoops with the needs assessment that was being done. So some people felt like it was a little bit too intrusive and the way that questioning was asked by agencies was too hard on them. So that's what it means by that statement, is that some agencies have specific protocols to give out food and people found that really challenging.
You another one, Mike?
Comments heading, Pacific Social Services and Health Provider said council lagged behind and then had to catch up with what was already happening on the ground. I didn't think that was the case, was that the case?
Well, that's obviously their opinion with what happened and the response and we've definitely taken some learnings from the response. I think that we just need to take that with our feedback on how we engage from the outset on day one of a pandemic situation, but obviously it was an ever-changing situation. So we reacted as fast as we could.
Thank you, Councillor Morrell?
Thank you, Madam. I guess this is a quarterly update. I guess I could need to ask the question, how long are we going to do these updates on this report? Because there's an awful lot of work going on here, which involves time and money. And so that's my first question.
It is a question we have asked ourselves, actually, how long should we do that? I would say you will have at least two more reports of this nature and it's probably when we can be confident that we've got vaccination or coverage and we've got some, the indicators are working well, particularly the economic ones. But yes, I'm not sure that there is, we won't be doing it forever anyway.
I just noticed also on page 42, we're going to give free access to the pools during the summer period or the summer month. Is that a decision, that decision, does that need to come before council for approval, that sort of decision? Or is that just an officer recommendation and we'll do it?
It did come before council, as I understand it. It was part of the recovery plan when it was put up, so it was in there.
Okay, and finally, the other question is I have on the, on page 50, it's the shovel-ready projects that were decided by central government that they didn't qualify. What's, are all of those projects in the LTP? And what is, just remind me of the timeline for the Aotearoa Reservoir, the Northern Surah Replacements, the Porro City Centre wastewater storage tank. And I know we've talked about it, but what's the timeframe for these things?
I don't know the detail of all of that, but they are all somewhere in our long-term plan. But I can certainly, or our proposed long-term plan, so I can certainly come back to you with that detail.
I can wait if it is in the plan, but I was just, because if the government had said yes, we could have started straight away on those projects.
You'll recall that no water projects were funded through that fiscal stimulus money and instead they've dropped into the water reform projects. As it happens, when we got round to the water reform projects, we didn't pick up every single one. It was going to be more difficult, but all of those projects were projects that we already had in our planning. So they are all covered in either in the current long-term plan or in the proposed one.
Councillor Ford?
Cool, yeah, so looking at that report, I kind of felt like anyhow COVID-19 highlighted those inequities that we had in our community. But I did sort of take heart from the leadership within not only our council. So I disagree, similar to Councillor Duncan, I agree that, I thought that our council stood up and they led through that pandemic, as you say, Mayor, it was, you know, day one, what do you do on day one of a lockdown? There's no, there's no book that tells us that these are the steps to guide you through this. So, but what, yeah, so, you know, big ups to you guys. I did feel though, and it's echoed in that report, the coordination of the food banks, it did fall down and again, we can take some learnings from that. Food security came up as an issue, the emergency housing continues to be on the incline with home ownership on the decline. And even though it's not in that report, I know that in our community we've got angst around gentrification that's happening. Those are the mental health issues, all of these issues. And I'm sure that Councillor Leggett will agree with me, all of these are issues that only the government has the access and resources to fund. This isn't, these aren't council issues, but also make the point that we are here to advocate for those issues because those are issues that concern our people. But yeah, definitely highlight that these are not core council responsibilities. I want to go to the recommendation around this fund, the 37,000 unallocated funding going to, from the Making It Happen Fund. Now that fund, some councillors will know, that was left over from a collaboration fund that we had in the previous term. So it does give me heart that we are looking to put that into what could be referred to as a collaboration of all the colleges putting, coming together to run the Polyfest. as a collaboration of all the colleges putting, coming together to run the PolyFest. On... In the attachment three that you've got, mayor, you've got, I think it's the second or third paragraph, in brackets, you make reference to a fund, a fee or a figure of $5,000. Now, I know previously as the chair of the Events Committee that we've given these colleges, not 5,000, it's been in excess of 10,000 in previous years. So I just wanted to get clarification around that $5,000 figure. What was that in reference to?
Izzy, I actually think that's the amount the arena usually put in.
Okay, so that was in reference to the booking of the arena. Cool. And then, every year that PolyFest is run, the common theme that seems to rise is the lack of continuity with the colleges because how it's run is one college runs it one year, then the following year, some other college runs it and they don't have like notes that they pass on to help. So everyone's going from square one. Is there an ability for our events team to take it on in partnership with local colleges to make sure that there is a seamless event that's run each year?
I've already asked that a couple of months ago and Helen's working on it and is going to come back to us.
Great minds, great, that's me.
Okay, councillor Hayward?
Thank you, your worship. Page 55. One of those questions, I had two questions, but one's been answered by councillor Ford, so that saved us some time. I'm going to vote in support of the recommendations. But I wanted to just check with the drivers licensing, driving for life, how many additional people, because I couldn't find in the explanation, how many individuals would be benefited from their program. Suffice that, but I want to preempt it by saying that actually this is going back into the previous councillor's point about where there are a range of challenges facing the city and that, yes, it could be very well easy to say that these all require central government leadership. This is one where actually central government should have been leading. If they had followed through with promises made three years ago, they would have had the nationwide strategy, nationwide funding for this program. Appreciative of the council, if this passes, is going to show local leadership in supporting a program which is going to help Lungatahi get jobs. So can I get an answer on the number of people who are going to be helped by this?
Yeah, so I believe that it's $500 per person. I'm trying to do the maths, feeling very hot in this room.
Councillor, when I spoke with Michelle from Partners Poonirua, on average, it is $500 per young person that gets put that program. But it depends on whether they're just doing their theory and/or into their restricted. So there's a bit of give and take. So to give you a specific number is probably a bit tough, but if we work on a $500 basis per young person.
The only comment I'd make is that this is one of those instances where I think, you know, the council, Nati Toa and other local businesses are all well aware that we need to build the capacity of soft skills for our Lungatahi so that they can be able to be more readily employed. We have a lot of young people here, this is a great idea of using available funds to help a project that's going to grow our economic and also the pride of individuals who are doing this program. Kia ora.
Thank you. Taku?
To sort of highlight that if there are a couple of ports still to come, whether we could put a wider equity lens across it. There's a lot of data out there where it actually specifies that in some cases both Maori and Pacific get cut short. And a lot of places, we had a workshop yesterday where some Maori teams keep people on Covid response, particularly the equity space. And you'll find if you do, if you do do the research and push in the data as well, you'll find there's a lot of gaps.
Okay, thank you. Have you staff, I assume, taken that on board?
Yeah, so it's our intention, Taku, to look at that in the next report. That's coming up in April, so noted, thank you for that.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, I'll put the report. All those in favour? All those against, carried. So we move to 11.2 Adoption of the Solid Waste Management and Minimization Bylaw. I will move it, put it on the table, seconded by councillor Hayward. Open for discussion or... Discussion? Yes, councillor Hayward?
Just again, I'd like to support this, the recommendations here. There has been considerable work undertaken by councils across the region, independently working collaboratively to ensure that this bylaw is regionally consistent. This gives certainty to providers and those who want to do the work in this region. Furthermore, it also gives more tools to council to help deal with some of the challenges around managing our solid waste. There is still a lot of work that has to be done, both at local council and across the region in terms of turning the tide, so to speak, on solid waste management. Kia ora.
Thank you. Anyone else, councillor Duncan?
Yeah, I come at it from a totally different perspective. On page 57, in the discussion, Porro City Submission Analysis Item 8, it ends with an officer's note that says, "Waste incineration is regarded in the same manner as disposal at the landfill and as such is situated at the bottom of the waste hierarchy." Who regards it that way?
He's going to answer that one. Is he here? Where is he, Zia?
Yeah, your worship. That incineration at the bottom of the waste hierarchy is as regarded by Waste Min... The Waste Minimisation Institute of New Zealand and is recognizing the fact that incineration is effectively along with burying something in the ground and allowing it to sit there. The opposite end of the spectrum from not creating the waste in the first place and then going through a number of steps to either divert or reuse or repurpose it. So that's where it falls or why it falls at the bottom of that hierarchy.
Follow up?
Yeah, if you don't mind, because when I read on page 59, "Within three months of completion of the building work, the principal contractor must add to the waste management plan an estimate of any cost savings that have been achieved by completing the implementation of it." Yeah, right. That'll be easy, nothing. "To be of any value as a measure," that should read, "an estimate of any extra cost or cost saving." Because I think this is going to be an exercise in box filling and it's all going to go on the cost of building and the cost of a house will go even further.
Noted. Any other comments? No? Okay, I'll put the report. All those in favour?
Page 61 Treaty Considerations. It ends with the sign, "Bylaw 2020 does not affect Ewi customary rights." What does that relate to?
David? 61?
Yep, got it, your worship, thank you. That is a clause that is basically saying that as far as the total waste hierarchy is concerned, there are no customary rights which are either breached or impacted upon by any of those levels in that waste hierarchy. As you've said, from reuse down to disposal and incineration.
So what's that got to do with signed by law?
Assigned.
Yes, my apologies, your worship. Councillor Duncan is correct, that signs by law there should be referencing the Solid Waste Management Minimization Bylaw. Correct.
Yes.
Got it.
One final question. Page 64, item 14. "Each council is to ensure that compliance, monitoring and enforcement of the bylaw is sufficiently resourced." What does that mean for us? Is that extra staffing that I've got to do there?
Yeah, your worship, there are a couple of fairly hefty new requirements through the bylaw here. Waste licensing or licensing of waste operators is the first one, which will take some time for us to work out what the framework actually looks like, what's required to become licensed. And also the waste data framework, which is a couple of years' worth of work in order to produce waste data collection methodology and storage regionally. Now, as that one is not in full effect for another two years, it may be that we find we do require a little extra resourcing internally or resourcing as a regional group to make sure that we are keeping on top of that collection of that data as time goes by. But also with the waste operators licensing, that's right, it may be an easy thing to add into our current enforcement and monitoring, but we're just going to have to watch what happens as that actual, that piece of work develops and we settle on the actual licensing method.
Okay. All right, I'll put the report. All those in favour? All those against, carried. We move to 11.3 Adoption of the Significant Engagement Policy. Could I have a second, please? Thank you, councillor Leggett. Open for discussion. Councillor Duncan?
Look, on page 97, I got a surprise to see that Moana Court Housing is listed amongst the strategic assets. Is that correct?
Yes.
Always has been, councillor.
Yep. In view of what we're considering.
Yes, we had a workshop earlier in the year, Roy Baker took it and actually asked you the question about, did you want to leave it there or not? And I think the mayor went round the room and at the time you said, let's leave it there.
Typically, most local authorities have their social housing assets as a strategic asset. There is a requirement under the Local Government Act regarding social housing and how we consider it.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll put the report. All those in favour? All those against, carried. 11.4 Endorsement of the Draft Wellington Regional Framework. I'll move it, put it on the table, seconded by councillor Trillin. Open for discussion? Do you... Oh, that was quick. Councillor Morell?
Thank you, madam mayor. I actually stayed up till midnight last night and read this. Because, and I don't want to be skeptic, but I do have to ask the question because I'm showing my age here. About 14 years ago, we were involved in the Wellington region. I can't remember what it was called in those days, it was something or other, something or other. And there was a high-powered committee of all the councillors and it had some independent chair, Exor Black or whatever he was. And it just didn't achieve anything. It was, it came to a stumbling block because it came down to mayors being parochial in their points of view and one in particular, who still happens to be a mayor. So my question is, do you have a sense of what, how binding is this for all of the councils?
From the mayor's point of view, the mayors are all binding and the one you're talking about is toeing the line. So I'll pass that over to Wendy if she'd like to answer it. But as far as I'm concerned, it's going ahead. The other councils have all stamped theirs, we're the last council to be doing this. And we've got a group above the mayors who will be running this, so the mayors will be toeing the line.
So councillor, you will be referring to the Wellington Regional Strategy, which was more an economic development strategy, it wasn't actually a spatial plan?
Well, that was really, the spatial planning was the downfall because the mayor of Apahut
excluded it from it.
Would not, did not want to be involved.
Yeah, that's right. So times have changed. The mayor of Apahut is now signed up to that. Apahut has signed up to this plan. So, and in fact, the plan, and Kim is sitting in the back row there, but the plan is pretty much a reflection of what we work, that we have all done, either in our district plans or in our individual areas. So over time, I imagine that it will become much more of a critical element, particularly in the light of water reform and other things. But it will become a critical path to achieving some of the things that this region might want to.
You touched on the subject of Three Waters. In it, it says, "One early key initiative for the region will be to develop, development of a 50 to 100-year regional three-water strategy. For the first time, local government, Ewi and central government will work together to develop a regional view of the longer-term three-water infrastructure requirements." Now, that to me, I'm not saying that's not a bad thing, but it to me signals that, you know, I'm not quite sure how it works regionally, that, you know, they're not concerned, I don't think the Apahut region is going to be concerned about what happened in Plymouth and those sorts of, you know, those sorts of priorities because individual communities will still have those. So my question is, hey, I fully support it, I'm just highlighting the, you know, that some of the things in here are binding and it means that we are going to be talking together, which is really great. And I guess the end result is we should be starting to look at the word amalgamation again. Thank you.
Well, we are, we do have the three waters that the councils are all joined on. So yes, amalgamation is a good discussion going forward, we agree.
But the three waters, there are still individual councils are responsible for their own areas.
Well, we're still all on Wellington Water together though, so we are more of a group and we are looking at the government water reforms together. So it is going somewhere this time.
Thank you.
Councillor Trillin?
Thank you, your worship. I want to begin by saying I will be supporting this plan as I believe we need to progress on a regional approach and get this out to consultation. There was a few things I wanted to touch on. First of all, I think, and I won't go over this in detail because we discussed it at workshops, but I was a little bit frustrated around the degree of focus on climate change in the strategy long-term. But the impression I got from the workshops, when we're having those discussions, is that there will be greater focus on that climate data incorporated in the future. So I think that's a really positive direction to start moving in. On future strategies, I think I would quite like to see a more collaborative or partnership-based approach from the beginning involving councillors. I felt that even though we were given opportunities to give feedback, it felt like relatively speaking, that was quite late in the pace and it was quite reactive as opposed to proactive. And it meant that where there were things we'd like to see more focus on, and for me, the one was climate change. It was too late for that to be substantially changed by the time it got to us. And given that, it felt like some of the feedback we gave didn't have a huge impact on the final result. But in any case, I will be supporting this. I think we need to progress and get it out to consultation. But there's some things we could do differently next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Leggett?
Yeah, I obviously support the growth framework as well. My question is around the national policy statement that's out that's going to require us to alter this spatial plan. So how is that going to proceed and what impact will it have?
Evening councillors. So under the national policy statement, we have to do basically another growth strategy. It's called a future development strategy. And we have to consider things that we haven't considered to date as a city, including the intensification requirements of that national policy statement, which if, I'm not sure how aware you all are, I think we've had a few briefings on it, but we have to basically consider intensification up to six stories along a rapid transit route. So this, while this growth framework reflects our district plan, we have our medium density zone up to three stories. We will have to go a further step and consider, you know, going even higher in those areas. So we'll have to do a bit more work and there's obviously an infrastructure components to intensification that we'll have to work through. So this is, you know, this is a step on that path. Does that answer your question?
Yes, in part, other than the fact that, so that's directly related to this intensification. Are there other areas that we are going to have to alter the spatial strategy? And how will we do that going forward?
Oh, I mean, are there areas in terms of, are you going to talk to Kim?
Yeah, one of the other requirements of the national policy statement even development is a future development strategy. So I think we've said the next version of the framework will be a future development strategy. And there's a couple of projects in the project list that take us on that journey. So one is a regional Ewi spatial plan because the FDS requirements are bar on this higher than we've managed to achieve on this one. Yeah, and that will also have more teeth, so more regulatory kind of teeth. So that has to be redone by 2024. And we've already started working regionally about how we actually... Actually, it has to be done to inform your 2024 LTP, so it pretty much has to be done by June 2023.
So you're saying that the projects will help inform us of what needs to be changed in the future? Will contribute to that, some of the projects?
Yeah, I mean, my thinking at this stage is probably the level we've got now won't change that much. It's not only going to change the direction of where growth is, we might... that much, it's not only going to change the direction of where growth is, we might bring in some more depth of some things like climate change, and we've done that piece of work, but the FDS requirements we haven't met this time are a lower level of detail along the lines that Tories talked about.
Okay, any other questions? No, okay, I'll put the report, all those in favour? All those against carried, eleven point five. You will notice you have got a sheet of extra sheet of paper on your table. Before I move it, I'm going to be adding a number four, which is agree a hundred and twenty thousand be included in the long-term plan, twenty twenty one to twenty fifty one capital program for Marines Hall commemorative purposes. So I'm going to move that, can I have a second there? Thank you councillor Nalo. So open for discussion, councillor Morrell.
Thank you, mayor, just a couple of things on the, the items that we, the main focus. The council fund the harbour and catchment restoration of third-party funding is not received. Do we, what, can someone just clarify that in terms of, what are we looking at in terms of the funding shortfall or, you know, what the possible cost is and who is the, who is the, the party that may not be stepping up?
I'll attempt to begin answering that, but Nigel behind you might have to jump in if it gets technical. The, we already have a harbour riparian planting and harbour improvement program, which, which is funded inside council. But what, what Nigel is doing, looking at is funding opportunities to accelerate that program. So we're bringing forward, we're doing the riparian planting in particular, a lot faster than we're scheduled to do. And there are a couple of potential funding buckets, particularly in central government. One of them is the freshwater improvement fund. And there are some other funds around, so what we're looking at doing is trying to source that fund to enable us to go faster with our harbor program. Is there anything that you wanted to add to that, Nigel?
Just one further then, is the Wellington Regional Council involved in any areas of this at all?
Nigel.
Yep, the Regional Council does have a small program in place for parts of Poru. But again, they do need to contribute as well.
Okay, the other one is, item A on that list is committing funding for multi-use community facilities in northeast and central areas. Now, I'm, maybe I've missed something here because I'm not aware of what that is about. It says it was already included in the current long-term plan, but I, I'm just trying to work out what is those facilities?
We did workshop this, councillor Morrell.
Maybe I'm short to memory then, sorry, I apologize.
So we have an existing eight million for the east and then we had a community facilities workshop where we had a presentation that suggested that the northern area and these other ones should be included in, in the long-term plan. And the workshop was unanimous, I think, as I recall.
You did vote for it.
Obviously getting Alzheimer's because I couldn't remember, but, but I mean, I'm, I'm just concerned because obviously we've got some big challenges, particularly with recent events and items like this might consider to be a luxury. And so, you know, I, you know, there's a couple of items on there that I certainly think are a luxury and one I'm not going to relitigate, but I'll be strongly opposed to when, when the time is right. We have been overruled on that, so I'm not going to relitigate it. But I just need to point out that after recent events and with, particularly around the infrastructure, we've got some big challenges and, you know, and it's the nice haves, nice to haves. It's time that they have to be put on the shelf and the must haves we've got to look at, so. But there's a lot of work goes into all of these to bring it to us. And, you know, a lot of money and time is spent by officers to bring these to us. So I'm just saying that, you know, the concentration should definitely be on the must haves and not the nice to haves.
This is a thirty-year plan and these are a long way out, so you did workshop these and, and we have discussed them and they are further out, but we take you as noted.
It's, it's the years out, we never talked about the years out, if we did, I, I apologize.
We did, and, and we are completely into infrastructure.
Well, okay, well, you're putting me back in my place, but I'm just reiterating from the last couple of weeks of the events, it'll be the must haves and not the nice to haves.
And I think we all agree with you that that infrastructure spend is the most important, councillor Morrell. Okay, councillor Duncan.
Look, I'm intrigued by the addition of number four there, do we have a result, do we, from the commission?
Let, let me just explain that, so the hearing last week for the Marines Hall, I was asked if there was a council resolution, I described the workshop that we'd had and I was asked by commissioners if there was a council resolution. We don't have a council resolution, so it felt appropriate to include a council resolution at this point.
Any other discussion?
Oh, sorry.
Was that councillor Hayward first and then councillor Morrell?
Thank you, your worship, I want to follow up on the previous question. And about, so I could just be really clear about this. Are there any legal risks as consequence of either voting for or against the addition of item four in the motion?
No legal risks.
Have you got to follow up there? No? Okay, councillor Morrell.
Just the one item on page one eighty seven, the potential risk in the change of Wellington City Council's share of wastewater treatment. Every time I have a wastewater meeting, the Wellington City Council members of that raise this thing about the dividend and I guess this is what this is referring to. And I'm tired of trying to, can we try and resolve as one way or the other so that we don't have to look embarrassed or not embarrassed? But try and put them off when they ask this question.
This is not about the dividend, it's about the share of the costs, as I understand it, and David Down can confirm that, yeah.
So what is the, okay, well, that's still a problem, what is the, I mean, is the measuring of this accurate enough or is it, why is it in question, that's what I'm saying. Why is the flow in question then, in terms of, you know, who pays for what?
So we have a meter that measures flow, we do it regularly and you probably run out of my knowledge at this point, do you want to add to that, David?
Yeah, the, the point in question regarding the meter and how much is flowing in, the, the original deed is based on population, we've got a very accurate meter running there now and the issue is that we haven't done a reassessment of that split based on up-to-date meter readings and I'm just going to look at Graham Greve there and check that that is correct and what we're waiting to do.
Hi, to answer the question, it's measured daily. And the deed states that over the preceding year, we take the daily average meter reading and that's then how we divide up the operating costs. So we do this every year and it's just part of the process. So, but what happens is it's, the, the volume actually changes and it's actually moving in our favor so that we can recover more costs from Wellington City.
Thank you. Any other ones? Any other questions? Councillor Leggett.
So just to be clear, I note on page one hundred and eighty four, eighteen C, it says there will be no new funding initiatives other than climate change, Josh, or additional full-time equivalents. These would be managed by internal reallocation of resources or through external grants or funding. And noting that we have been talking today about a number of things which, and stuff that's out for consultation, will only further increase our rates if they come to pass. So I just, I just note that and given that our rates, the reduction that we're getting supposedly, it's not actually a real reduction, from eleven point seven percent to six point eight percent over three years and is mainly the result of changing the date for move to balance budget, other than, or instead of, well, sorry, rather than making significant cost savings, because I can't see any cost savings or very many cost savings anywhere really.
Okay, no question on there, anybody else got a question? Okay, I'll move the report, all those in favour?
Aye.
All those against carried, eleven point six, transpiring a lease of it known at Tony Park, I'll move that, seconded by councillor Wee Happy, open for discussion. Thank you councillor Wee Happy.
Thank you, I just have a question, obviously I support the recommendations, however, I just would like a little bit of background information on kind of where the Taekwondo club is sitting. Was this a case of someone has come along and wanting to purchase the building so that's preferable for us or is a Taekwondo group agree that they want to give their lease up?
Through, through the mayor, the Taekwondo Club has come to the end of its life and has been looking around for somebody to purchase their building. From an officer perspective, because it's a recreation reserve, we would have preferred a recreation association or group, but it's a community group and we think, well, that doesn't comply with the Reserve Act or our planning, but it is still a sensible outcome in this particular case.
Okay, thank you, sorry, just that in the report, there was no information at all other than the strategic direction and flexibility for this particular group wanting to purchase.
It's definitely a case of them coming to the end of their life and I don't think they're currently practicing at all there.
Thank you, councillor Ford.
Yep, thank you, Madam Mayor, yeah, no, the last time Taekwondo was operating out of there was in two thousand and eighteen, but meta klimata for this report, I had a question around, I think it was clarification around the timing with your reclassification, I think you said just then, Andrew, around it being what the purpose was for that particular reserve and these guys need to have it as a local purpose reserve before they can operate in it. Can you please, can you just clarify around that, because if they can go and, I think I read in the report, you said you can't change it until three years down the track, two to three years down the track?
Through the chair, the officer's Matt was just proposing that we make the change down the track, but we certainly wouldn't stop them operating in the meantime. So there's nothing to stop them operating, that's just, we're just acknowledging that's, we wouldn't want to seek a special process and go to that cost until we, you know, it's time to do, do the wider, wider process, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, it does, so I guess my concern is, so there is, there would be no issue around them operating out of that space, given that it wasn't, it hadn't been specified.
So ever, the only thing we are waiting to see is if Kaingora are interested in doing some sort of deal about the park. And in that case, Kaingora would have to negotiate with the building owner in terms of purchasing the building, just as they would with the Taekwondo Club. But we'll wait and see what comes from that.
Okay, yeah, I saw that you're waiting on them. Yep, no, okay, no, that's, I think that's all I had.
Councillor Duncan.
Yeah, my concern is that if they have no guarantee of tenure after twenty twenty three, then is that building, what is the point in them buying the building unless KO are interested in buying the building as well?
Yeah, that's through the chair, mayor, that's really over to them. So, you know, if we do change the, the nature of the reserve and no one else is interested in purchasing, you know, KO is not interested in purchasing, things would just carry on and we'd reissue our lease.
And another question there, on the page one ninety four, significance, we say significance that the report does not trigger council significance and engagement policy, but in the engagement heading that follows, we say the lease transfer is not consistent with requirements of the Act and the RMP, which warrants consideration of public notification. So I'm not convinced that simply referring the decision on the proposal to elected officials in a public forum is an adequate level of public notification.
I guess the way we looked at it was, we're being completely transparent about it, it doesn't quite fit, but it's just one little club on a reserve and we're just trying to take the most practical outcome. If we don't, if we get into consultation and things like that, well, we'd go through that process, but we're making it pretty difficult for a an owner of a building who's come to the end of their life in their club and it's just sitting there not being used. As I said, we'd much prefer another recreation club, but we've locked around, so nothing really happening. So the officer has noted, you know, technically it doesn't comply, but we're just taking a practical approach.
Councillor Hayward.
Thank you, your worship, my question is kind of related to a previous one by councillor Duncan and I don't want us to go down too far in the world of hypotheticals, but if our Kaingora have an interest in the reserve, as the report states, it may not necessarily be the building, in which case, is that, would that then become part of a process under the Public Works Act? Can you clarify?
Yeah, I think through the mayor, I think it would become a process under the Public Works Act, but I imagine they'd be interested in the whole area. That's, that's what I picked up from the previous conversations, it's just that nothing has come to fruition.
Councillor Leggett.
I cannot believe that we have spent this amount of time on four hundred and thirty, twenty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents a year compared to the amount of time we spent on the long-term plan and setting of rates, for God's sake.
Last one to councillor Wee Happy, because this is a second question, so, second question? No?
Oh, I did have just one. Well, thank you. In regards to you, when you're talking about looking around for community groups and organizations, is there, and I don't need to know what it is, but is there a certain criteria that you look at other than what is in the strategic direction? When it comes to these buildings?
Do you want to have a go at that, Matt? Any ideas?
Excuse me, through you, Madam Chair. I, I'm not actually familiar with the, the full background in terms of where we've looked around with the leasing of that hall.
Through the mayor, it's been an ongoing discussion for the whole time I've been here at council. So I've been aware of it, there's been conversations all over the place with the owner about trying to find a buyer and trying to get the council to purchase it, et cetera. So again, I think, again, I'm pretty much, this is quite a good outcome from our point of view.
Okay, final question, councillor Ford.
Sorry, it was just around ensuring that we had clear, transparent communication with Rakahanga Manihiki to make sure that they know twenty twenty three and we don't know what will happen going forward. And then I just made a note of around shared resources for council staff, there always seems to be, and I think Kylie sort of alluded to it, you know, there are always these sports group that need a space to stay in and we don't always have a club rooms or whatever set up for them and there are, there are other groups, there are groups out there asking for spaces. I just wonder if our council can look at a better coordinated way of sharing our resources that we currently have. Sorry councillor Leggett, I asked two more questions than I did for the LTP.
Through the mayor again, we're not purchasing the building off the Taekwondo Club.
No.
Somebody else is who's prepared to pay for it, so that's the, and certainly the officers, Matt, will be very, very clear with the new owner about the lease criteria.
Okay, I'm putting the recommendation, all those in favour? All those against carried, we now move to eleven point seven, Wanera to Onipoto Shared Pathway and Coastal Resilient Project, so I'll move that to put it on the table, seconded by councillor Hayward. Obviously, we've been working on this project for a number of years and it needs to go out for consultation, so on option one, or we need to tell residents about option one, so open for discussion, councillor Trillin, followed by councillor Duncan.
Thank you, your worship, I'm just very quickly, I want to acknowledge that option one of all the options we were given and discussed in the workshop is the option that is the most optimal both for harbour resilience and health and is supported by Nati Toa as well. It's something that ultimately I think we'll actually be quite proud of in the long term. I think for me, it ticks a whole lot of boxes in terms of increased multimodal transport use and making sure we're doing things sustainably, sustainably, sorry, from the perspective of our harbor. And in the long term, we'll produce the best results for both our community and our harbor and with that in mind, I hope everyone will support it, thank you.
Councillor Duncan.
Yep, page one ninety eight, recommendation five concerned me. Yeah, page one ninety-eight, recommendation five concern me, uh, where we say we agree that if Waka Kotahi and external funding cannot be secured to meet the estimated budget shortfall, the project will be closed. Surely we'll still continue with the erosion control.
Through the, um, mayor, you'd continue with the work at Wainera Beach, um, that part of the, the work. And then we're saying the money will be returned to the, um, Transport Department. And as we said, they're, they'd only intervene with erosion control if their asset was under threat. So this is making it very clear under the, um, well, under what we're proposing, that this project doesn't proceed if, um, alternative sources of funding are not found to match the council funding. I guess at any stage, um, if the council wanted to give a, um, direction over its, its share that it should just go on erosion control, then you could do so, but that's not the case at the moment. And to note, um, we've made it quite clear in the, um, paper what we thought that sort of amount of coastal resilience would cost, about six point one million.
Any other questions there? Councillor Hayward?
Um, thank you, your worship. As somebody who, uh, you like councillor Duncan, live in this community, I share councillor Duncan's concerns about the overall resilience of that space. There has been a lot of talk and discussion. The report here tries to convey that sense that there's been a lot of engagement. But I'm acknowledging also the amount of work and complexity in trying to complete work that is sitting next door to a large body of water. My personal view is I'll be supporting this motion. I foreshadow the concern that councillor Duncan has, that if we do not receive funding, I will feel very uncomfortable about the public safety if that, if great care is not taken about the threat of, um, erosion. I, in my opinion, that threat is real right now. So irrespective of the funding of fully of, of this project as designed or some other project, that work needs to be done. That said, I do have to also give a bouquet to the council. I believe, I couldn't, having looked through this document, I couldn't see anything that had been missed from, uh, being distributed to councillors as part of the deliberations in workshop. And in terms of trying to be, uh, transparent with the community around the process for a discussion on this project, of which there is a lot of, uh, interest from the community, it is important that we are, are trying to do our part in, uh, being transparent where we can. So I would hope that officers are aware that there is a need for, as part of the engagement process, to have a physical public meeting for residents and other interested parties to talk about this proposed project and give, and, and be clear with them about the elements of feedback that they can participate in so that they have some meaningful purchase on, uh, in, in, uh, engagement, some stakeholding, that they are entitled to as part of the process. Kia ora.
Thank you, councillor Hayward. I'd like to correct what I said, because I said in, um, consultation, we're actually doing stakeholder engagement. So I'm sorry I used that incorrect wording in the beginning. Councillor Leggett?
I, I just want to, I mean, I, uh, agree with Josh that this is a great project, if it, if it can be off the ground. And it, and it would be, uh, you know, a leader in terms of, um, setting some precedents. However, um, I think we just need to be clear, as councillor Duncan pointed out, if the external funding is not secured, this project stops. And I don't know whether that will be satisfactory to your constituents in Tiatahi Bay. And, um, so that is something that we should think very carefully about because I don't know what the chances of us obtaining that funding are. I mean, I suspect, you know, many are slip and, uh, there are a couple of, um, funding options for us. And if one goes down, that means the whole project goes down. And the question, Andrew, you were saying, uh, if, uh, roading were to protect their asset, six, six plus million dollars, but that's to do the whole coast with.
That's, that's the whole coastal thing. All, all we're saying is it's the majority of the, um, funding at the moment sits in the roading department. So we're returning the money to them. And in terms of protecting their assets throughout the, um, Porirua city, we've got slips and things happening all over the place. So they work out as soon as they need to intervene, so they'll be monitoring. As you know, if you look along that bit of coastline, we're getting pretty close in some areas. So you'd expect some bits and pieces of work to happen to maintain the asset. But that, that's what I'm saying. It might be helpful, you know, in terms of the, um, we've talked in the workshop about the NZTA funding and we think, um, our probability of getting that funding is reasonably good. In terms of the paper, I'm identifying a, um, request for two point eight million from the lotteries. But there's a freshwater improvement fund, there's a regional cultural and heritage fund, there's a New Zealand, um, uh, there's a New Zealand trust, a grants trust. There's New Zealand Cycle Trail Enhancement Extension Fund. There's the Hatmana Charitable Trust, the Lottery Environment and Heritage Fund, the Lottery Community Facilities Fund. There's a number of aspects. So while we've got a rough division of the, the, um, prices or the, the split, you can be assured that we'll be tapping into a number of, um, sources to try and get money.
Uh, just a follow-up question. So how confident are you? Because the whole project rises or falls on getting that money, that external money. How confident are you that we would be able to, um, get, uh, uh, funding to make up for the shortfall from NZTA and our contribution of three point six million or whatever it is?
Um, we, we can put forward pretty good, um, grants applications, I would have thought, for this project. It fits with a number of national and strategic criteria. So, um, but again, it depends who we're up against. We've given ourselves a bit of time. We debated how long, um, we should give ourselves. And we've said, you know, twelve to eighteen months and we'll report back to you and you'll make a decision at that time. So, um, when you ask me how confident I am, fingers crossed, but, yeah.
Okay, Taku?
Um, with respect, um, uh, your worship, I was, I was quite taken aback. I tried to figure out, um, the name in which, uh, Andrew had pronounced. And, uh, it might be, uh, uh, it might be a, a sort of an exercise that we can all go through in terms of the pronunciation of, of, of the names of our city. I mean, not to be disrespectful or anything, I mean, just, you know, I, I heard why. And, um, it's, it's we. We need her. We need her. So just to be, just to be mindful and just to be, um, and just to put it on the table there, there.
Thank you.
Take into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Morrell?
Just, um, if my memory serves me correctly, which hasn't done so much tonight. But, um, um, when this project was first mooted, which was supposedly about ten years ago, I think, and councillor Kelly was one of those ones who, uh, instigated the discussion. I, I thought at that time that there was a guaranteed sum of money allocated that we could tap into from NZTA. There's a formula and that we were, uh, we were guaranteed that sort of money if we did this project. Am I incorrect with that, uh, memory? And it, mirroring in mine, it's over ten years ago.
Through, through the mayor, things change. So what I'm most, um, in recent times, we've had Julianne Genta as an Associate Transport Minister making money available for cycling, cycling and water skiing, but that's pretty much come to the end. And now we have a, a FAR rate that currently sits at fifty-six percent, going down to fifty-five percent. Things change from time to time, but, um, there is not some sort of fund there that says if a council builds a, um, walkway or a shared pathway or something, it'll be funded by NZTA.
They don't hold money over for ten years. No. Okay, no more questions, I'll put the report. So all those in favour? Aye. All those against? Carried.
Aye.
Eleven point eight, strategic risk report. I'll move it, put it on the table, seconded by councillor Waddell. Open for discussion. Any discussion? We're all happy with that?
No, no, look, I thought it was a good report. A good report, um, as was noted, uh, in the, um, Risk Committee, Finance Risk Committee. It's, uh, but the updates were, um, very valuable as well, that were highlighted in blue. They added a lot more detail, which was excellent.
Anybody else? No? All right, I'll put the report. All those in favour? Those against? Carried. I'm going to move, we go into public excluded and we'll take a pause because it takes a little while to get offline. So I'll move it and I have it seconded by councillor Duncan.
Will you guys lose me or am I staying on?
Yep, I'm just, sorry, yeah. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried. Sorry.